Receive the minutes from the April 13 meeting. May I change his comments or motion?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Scott, who? Ms. Davis, yes. Mr. Kaiser?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
And you receive current expenses and questions for a motion.
One question. What would be the component of 27,000?
That's the leaf.
The new leaf machine might take a kilogram.
Okay, thank you.
What's a leaf machine?
The leaf sucker.
Thank you.
Back here.
And $7,500 that Sherwood moves.
You pay group marketing painter, a line painter for stop cars and...
What's a machine?
Yeah.
I'd like to motion to approve the expenses as submitted.
Second.
Ms. Davis? Yes. Mr. Kaiser?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
All right. This evening we have a public hearing, so I am opening the hearing for ordinance 115 for alternative energy. Is there anyone here that wants to make comment? All right, I'm closing this hearing. All right, now moving this first down to end of our business. Renee, did you have anything?
The only thing I had, you had given me, I'm not sure if you can read the, I had municipal league copy of an invoice. I wasn't sure if you wanted to bring that up tonight. I had it here.
Every year we get an invoice from the municipal league. Rather than make the assumption that you are deciding the same thing each year, just bring it for you. It's $770. We were not a member of the class. So, it's your pleasure. I think it's a valuable, you know, we talked about this before. They do provide training for any of you that want to go and participate in the training they provide for council members. They make information available to us. They do, they do research. They provide us, you still get a lot of that information, but it can be personalized if we want it to be.
We would really not.
Did not. In fact, we, I don't think we have for...
We haven't done this since 2012.
I wouldn't recommend changing it at this point.
Okay. Everybody?
Agreed.
All right.
The last thing is Rita sent me a letter this week regarding this subpoena program. We need to go forward with that. We need to make a motion to decide if we want to do that or choose not to do it this year. It costs around like $7,000 to mail out subpoenas to non-payers. I don't, we did not do it last year. We decided to do it on an every other year basis.
Remember what we took in.
I'm going to say around like 38,000.
Do we have a figure of what's outstanding? I mean, if you want to spend $7,000 to go after five.
Yeah.
This would be people that should have filed that didn't.
Yeah.
And they track it down by other tax returns, like state tax returns and stuff. So, it's hard to figure out really what we're missing unless we pursue the subpoena program.
It's always been beneficial.
I think the every other year course of action has proved a good decision. I think since we passed last year, we ought to seriously consider it this year. We've had a lot of new people come into the community that may not be aware of the tax accounts.
I know I'm happy to attend all right now, Chief. Well, so how many times have we, have we done it every other year? And if so, for how long?
We've done it, we used to do it every year up until probably 2011, 2012 timeframe, and then we backed off of it because it, it's an expense type of thing. So, we decided to lay off of it every other year type of thing.
And then when we were doing it every year, what was our historic thing?
We, it's been profitable every year. I mean, it's never been non-profitable. I mean, it's always been profitable.
So, the money's always replaced itself. I'll make a motion to spend the money to get more money.
To the subpoena program.
I heard a second. Okay. Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Kaiser?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
So, that $7,000 will come from?
It comes from the Rita fees. They take it out of our, we don't have to pay upfront.
Great.
That's all I have.
One question about that. The fees that we pay, do they charge the taxpayer?
They charge us. It just comes out of the money.
There's no way to charge the taxpayer, but, I mean, if, you know, we have 100 people and it costs them $7,000 to do it, they should need to whatever, program out a share of that, so we shouldn't have to put that bill because they're not capable of paying.
Would you like us to talk about that while you're taking this?
I mean, it's probably not within our control. I mean, I assume that's a process that Rita...
All right.
Good evening. I just have a few things. All the officers last week attended emergency trauma, first aid, and buddy rescue. This was actually a very unique training that the officers received. We received the training from all armed force personnel and also British Army personnel, which had been involved in hot zones in Afghanistan. They were all EMTs in Afghanistan and had treated wounded soldiers there and then themselves that received a Purple Hearts. So, it was great for the officers to learn techniques for tourniquets, quick plot, sucking chest wounds, all emergency trauma, things that we would be involved with in the very beginning stages of an event. Pray it never happens, but we want to be prepared. So, I want to thank them for their wealth of knowledge that they shared with us. Additionally, Officer Greenbaum attended homemade recognition identification of homemade bombs and explosives, which was put on by the Franklin County Sheriff's Office in conjunction with the Pleasant Valley Fire Department. And the Union County Drug Takeback was this past weekend. It went well. We collected 18 and a half pounds of medications that were turned in, which was not bad for the first time that we put this on. So, we're looking to do this again in the fall. So, it was a good turnout. And then finally, I attended a Madison County Prosecutor's motion, and the guest speaker was from BCI, Director from BCI. So, that's all I have. Any questions?
Thank you.
Couple of things. We have completed the land transfer with Mr. Valentine, and we'll now begin to work with him and his engineer on his development plans. This Sunday, Public Works will be participating in the Plain City Elementary Carnival. We'll have a couple of trucks there for the kids to look at, as well as we'll be handing out some village informational flyers. We had a sanitary sewer issue last week on Main Street, and I wanted to thank the city of Marysville, specifically City Manager Terry Emery and Marysville's sewer crew. They came out and assisted us and really appreciate their assistance. We're going to be doing hydrant flushing, May 11 through May 15. And I wanted to briefly mention that we've been working on numerous economic development projects. I know many of you have heard rumors about what those may or may not be. I wanted to share that we'll make you all aware of those as soon as we can. But oftentimes, these projects take a long time and involve many moving pieces before they come to fruition. And we are just as excited to share the information as you all are about hearing them. But oftentimes, they must remain confidential. While many of the details are worked out, they may involve purchasing property or leasing property. So, there's, there's some confidentiality that we have to keep there, and I assure you that we will share it as soon as we can with all of you. Unless there's any questions, that's all I have.
I know, just add to that, the benefit of us being silent is that nobody outbid somebody and we lose development. So, we have to guard that information as much. All right. Any questions?
If I may, just throw something into the open that, just to be clear, so long as, just to make sure that the public doesn't have the wrong understanding of how this works, these are private entities and private businesses, private individuals that have every right to conduct commercial transactions and purchases like anybody else. To the extent that they would require zoning or variances or any kind of zoning change for the properties or anything like that, it would have to come to a public light, it would have to come through a public hearing. Nothing would take place behind closed doors. There's no thing secret going on. But at the outset of these transactions, they will approach Kevin as representative of the village or the mayor as representative of the village to inquire as to, you know, different properties that might be available, things of that nature. And those things do have to be kept confidential, but it's not a breach of the public trust. The public trust, the public is always going to be protected, and this is not something that the public wouldn't have a right to know if there was some official action that had to take place. They're still be complying with sunshine laws and every other law that applies to our governing of the community. So, and just to make sure, I just want to make sure that that was clear in that way.
All right. Good. Thank you. Okay, question first.
Nothing, ma'am.
All right.
The only issue we had was Valentine issue. I have been working with the litigation with regard to the Lee property. We're aware that's ongoing. We've had some discovery going forward on that. Probably not tonight would be, tonight would not be a good time for an executive session. We will have one at some point in time, but right now everything's progressing as we've anticipated, and I think we're okay. So, I've been working on that issue and working with Kevin, going through some variable talkings and getting discovery through this. Otherwise, just preparing the resolutions and also we have a proclamation. I don't know if you want to talk about it now or later.
Okay.
Preparation for proclamation, Mr. Walter brought to you. Everyone's attention for the Lions Club, I guess.
No. We were looking to have a resolution from Council of the City and realized that we have another two weeks on it, so we look to bring that forward on the 11th day.
And we talked about a resolution, but it's going to be a proclamation, just to avoid that official brief voting process. And they have invited Council, if that one sheet, if I look at it, invite everyone to their 75th anniversary celebration at Old Scotts, May 20. All right. Thank you. All right. Planning zoning.
Yeah, we met and we are working with a resident on the, or well, Jerry Miller on Congo duplex on Maple and West Avenue, and they're supposed to be scheduled to be a DDA meeting. I'm not sure if that has happened or not. It was also announced that Champagne Bank has changed names to Savista. And we have set a hearing for the proposed property maintenance code for May 20 at 6:30. There was a new section added for vending machines, which we are not including in that at this point.
Question? BCI?
Speaking of, we're scheduled to meet on the 20th to address Mr. Nelson.
Actually, just as a side note, Renee, if Champagne has officially changed their name to Savista, we're going to have to change our notifications, publications.
Why?
Because we have this champagne mix.
Security and the library, you know, website.
And I think CIC?
We've got a Madison County CIC meeting tomorrow night, and the Union County was last Wednesday, which I was not able to attend.
All right. Park?
The meet on the 7th.
Are you still meeting in council chambers right now?
Yes. We'll, we'll be at the pool. We're going to, we're going to begin at a pool for a pool.
We're doing a tour.
Tour, and then we'll be at the U of L.
Sorry.
All right. Six, is there six?
Is it six, seven, right?
First now, finding us. We had meeting before here, before this, and it was short and sweet. We talked a little bit about the 14 budget and zoning. We are working on the position descriptions for zoning and considering, considering that I think that after discussion about zoning and breaking that out from Public Works instead of it being a meshed position, we're going to try and do that full-time for superintendent but our supervisor, but part-time for zoning. So, we'll give you more information as we flush it out. Tyler?
Thanks, Pete.
Thanks, Pete. Anyone want to, here that wants to report prep code?
I can do that. I've already passed out my Night at the Races. This is a fun night. If you've never done this, it's a, it's kind of hard to explain, but they run races that have already been run, and you bet on them, and you buy your horses, and it's, it is a fun night. We will provide food dinner for you. There is a cash bar. I do have some tickets with me tonight if you're interested. You can also get your tickets at ASC Feed and Supply and Main Street Treasures or online. You go to our Facebook page. A couple of other things, I don't know if you knew that the Cruisin was iffy this year. We aren't really sure whether we're going to be able to do that this year because of the volunteer situation, but we have managed to make that happen now. Megan Caldwell from Dutchman is going to run the Cruisin, and Stacy Curl is going to take her place on Christmas Under the Plaque Committee along with Amy Rucker. Amy Rucker will stay on that committee as well. Our grant program, we will be announcing that very shortly. That's going to be, I think it's up to $2,000 for some facade improvement. And let's see what else we have. I think that's pretty much it, just the regular activities going on. So, if you could see everybody at Night at the Races, that would be great.
All right. Thank you, Tony. The Council moving into business. We have the third reading of Resolution 1115, selling Public Works equipment on debt dues.
Motion to approve third reading of 1115.
Second. Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Kaiser?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yeah.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
And we have third reading of ordinance 115, the alternative energy ordinance.
Motion to approve third reading of 115.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Kaiser?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
And the second reading of ordinance 215, the rezoning request for 315, Rachel Colby. Motion to approve ordinance 215. Second. Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Kaiser?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yeah.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
So, you all received ordinances by email. Did you get an opportunity to look those over? We have the ordinance, an ordinance to approve current replacement pages to the Plain City codified ordinances and declaring an emergency. Emergency, just so we're keeping it up to date in current. It's ordinance 315.
I need the motion to wait three readings of ordinance 315.
Second.
I need to get any of those papers.
Okay. Jim, if you'd prefer that we just wait, we'll just wait till the next meeting. They were emailed.
I didn't see them either, so.
Okay. So...
And then it turns up by the, nothing. Couldn't do anything about that.
Oh, okay.
I'll draw the motion.
Thank you. So, we will hold off on these until next meeting. All right. I think that's it with regard to our business, so...
I did, that's a side track, because I did have one issue I wanted to discuss before we turned the Tigers loose. I was out this afternoon, and a car drove by me today just throwing a messenger this on our streets. Like, you look down Lantern Lane, and they're just laying in the gutter all the way down the streets. I ran around my neighborhood, and they're just in yards and in streets. Is that acceptable? I mean, is that not in violation of some either littering or solicitation ordinances? We have a solicitation ordinance. I have to take a look at it to see what the constraints are on it, but we do have one.
What about littering? I mean, I'm assuming this is going right in our wastewater, right down our sewers?
Some of them are. I know I complained about it several years ago, but I don't think there's much we can do about it.
I think. People are paying for this advertising, and if somebody complains to people who are doing the distribution, the person delivering it will be put on notice.
I mean, can we find those from littering?
Yeah, they're not supposed to deliver them that way. There's, there's supposed to be hooks under each mailbox, and they're supposed to hook it there or put it into like a newspaper slot of the mailbox. That's what's supposed to be done, not to just throw them.
That's what they do. They're literally hundreds of them. They made no efforts. I just watched them just throw it out the window as they smoked driving by. It's just ridiculous.
And some people don't pick them up and collect.
What about, would there be any interest in requiring folks to actually sign that I want this stuff before we even get it? Because honestly, I walk this from my curb to the garbage. It's a complete, it's ugly, it's a waste of resources. I have no interest in even having it. And if they want to advertise, there are proper ways where they can do that, in the newspaper, where they actually pay postage to get it delivered.
Well, I agree with Bob. I think it's just make a phone call to the messenger. Years ago, I worked for the Adspax, and it was required that those delivery people hand them on the doorknob. And if we got a complaint that it was thrown or tossed, you know, that carrier was gone. So, maybe this is the same instance. It's just a matter of, you know, maybe somebody official, have them, the mayor, you know, call them and say, hey, we've got complaints. You need to do this or else something.
Well, is there more teeth to it than that? In other words, if it happens again, we hit them with 500 counts of littering at 250 bucks a piece? I mean, it's just ridiculous. It's lazy, it's unacceptable. Literally, anyone else walking, driving down our streets, throwing stuff out would be...
I agree. I agree.
I mean, I'm happy to make the call if someone tells me who it is. I'm happy to take that responsibility.
I don't know who it is. I'm assuming, assuming it's the bag for our region that, well, if you want to make a call, make a call and see what that, what the return is, and then we can see where to go. The mayor, they are open to talking.
Would you have a moment to talk about that, Chief, afterwards? I mean, can I?
Yeah.
I just want to see what teeth I have to, you know, we have to kind of enforce it.
Well, I think the route that was mentioned first is, I think, to make them probably the best sense, and it'll be documented, that they were warned. And when we talked to the prosecutor, we could say they were contacted, they were warned not to do it. This is the action that was to happen.
Okay.
Just to go out and start charging people for littering.
I understand that. I just want to be able to say, if it happens again, X, X can happen. I just need to know what X is.
Do you don't mind if, do you don't mind if we handle that internally? We have contacts at Madison Press, and we can certainly reach out to them and work through this, and I'll get back to you with...
Sure.
But it's a messenger, right?
I'm sorry. It's the messenger.
It's the messenger.
Sorry.
I'll let you know what they say.
As far as soliciting goes, though, I know we have a note soliciting, so how is this not soliciting?
By permit.
So, do we issue them a permit to do this?
I don't think so, but...
You'd have to read the language of soliciting by permit to see if that would be applicable. I mean, I don't know that that is, if that's a, they're not soliciting sales per service. It's a newspaper solicitation, so I don't think it would apply.
Well, can we get an opinion on that? Because to me, it's just solicitations wrapped in a thinly veiled newspaper. I mean, it's 90% solicitation and advertisement. Obviously, they're not paying postage, which is why they have to do it by Pontiac instead of by UPS or USPS.
Thank you.
We can check into that.
I also have. Late this afternoon, I sent the comprehensive plan of a design remodel. If you guys can just take it. I know it was, it came late. He had a few things he was waiting on to finish up, but if you can take a look at it before next meeting, if you have any questions, send them to me so I can send them to him so we can have a look before the next meeting. First question.
And I wanted to add one comment, that as I've said before in these meetings, Council, everyone has a right to an opinion. And so, to make comments or to, about the way a person voted or something that occurs like that is really not appropriate. They have a right to vote the way they want to. You can have normal discussion and questions at some point if you want to, but to have verbal confrontations because of the way people vote is not good. Just a word to the wise. All right. Rock Mill is here this evening, and happy to have you again, and looking forward to what you have to present to us this evening. We will move out of your way and begin the floor.
Just a second. You all ready to figure out how to use the technical app? Again, I'm David Conley. I'm here with Rock Hill Financial. My team, my tech team is obviously not with me tonight, so we, it was a slow start. We would like to kind of move into the next segment of the analysis that our firm has done for the village. And that is, we covered in the first meeting, some comparables between Plain City and other villages of the same size. Second meeting, we spoke to you about kind of establishing some financial goals and philosophies. The reason I did that before this meeting is that in this meeting, we're going to be talking about specific financial items, and those particular financial items really have to be described and at least thought about in some type of context. So, when you see spending, sometimes you need to sort of think about it as to why you may spend the way that you do. And I wanted to give you some background there before we really got into the numbers. After we get through today's meeting, I'll come back and have some recommendations from our firm about our perspective of the village's overall financial perspective. So, today is intended to really give you a good handle on how the village has performed over the last five years, five to six years. If we see anything in those financial areas that appear to be a concern or... If we see anything in those financial areas that appear to be a concern or spending that seems to be either too high or too low, and we really do a deep dive into some of the expenses of the village. So my son will be operating the computer today. Tanner is in charge of taking care of that for us. So Tanner, if you would move on to the next page for me. Before, can you... Before we move into the detail, I wanted to give you a basic reminder of how the village compared to some of the other villages that were the five smaller and the five larger villages to Plain City. And we put together just a quick snapshot as a reminder from a population perspective. The yellow being, the less favorable meaning smaller, green meaning favorable, population change, you've had a substantial change in population. That's a two-sided coin. On one hand, it's nice that you are growing, that you have new people coming to the community, but it does present pressures on the ability to provide services and to maintain the infrastructure in the community. So there's two sides to that coin. Our tax base is about sort of the middle of the road. Median family incomes are higher than the group as a whole. Median home values are higher as a group as a whole. Your inside village, you might recall that statutory inside tax rate that you use, that you receive for operations. Yours is substantially lower than the median group, if you recall. So that puts you a bit of a disadvantage. Voted mills, because of the swimming pool, were a little bit higher and somewhat less favorable. Total property tax mills altogether, that means sort of the overall cost of property tax, right about the middle of the road. Your income tax, the middle of the road. Your general fund budget was actually smaller than the comparable group, if you'll recall. So we consider that favorable. The amount of debt you have outstanding, not too far off the median, and it's largely weighted into the swimming pool transaction. Your property tax production, that is the ability based on your tax base to generate tax revenues, very good. Your income tax production, slightly better than the norm. Total overall tax production, very favorable, meaning that from an affordable, affordability perspective, and I know that term is relative, the taxes are, the tax structure in this community are attractive for the community, for residents in the community. I get it, I get it. I know that's a relative perspective, but from our perspective, when we look at cost, it's a very manageable community to live in from a cost perspective. Total taxes as a percent of income, again, if not for the voted issue, would be much better, but still not far off the median. Your total revenues, not far off the median, but not necessarily in the greatest position. Our fund balances in the general fund, while when you look at them sort of independent of everyone else, the fund balances might look substantial, but when you do take the fund balances in consideration with other communities, your fund balances are lower than most other communities of your size. Your balances as a percent of revenues are reasonable. Your expenses as a percent of revenues are reasonable, and your balances as a percent of expenses are reasonable. So you mentioned that I sort of said, the community is sort of right down the middle from a very big picture perspective. Overall, the total expenses of the village are per person, per person that lives here, when compared to other communities like you, are right in the middle. So, yeah, again, it was, this was just sort of the big picture, and we're going to get into some of the details here. So just as a reminder, your, the way you're operating and the way you're structured, from the big picture perspective, is, from our perspective, a reasonable position when you compare yourself to other communities. Today is to look at internal and how we're doing. So Tanner, if you'd go to page four. Or page five.
Way to go, Tanner.
Okay. Is it possible that the whole file didn't download before we pulled out the USB? Just hang on for a second. Just go forward one page at a time slowly. Well, that's strange that we just did two. Hang on for a second. Give it a second here. Yep. All right. So the rest of the information that we're going to go through is going to use as a backdrop the cost of doing service or providing services in the United States. And that's usually reflected in the inflation rate. When you look at salaries and cost of energy, things of that nature, the inflation rate gives us an idea of how much things cost. We decided to take a sort of a snapshot of the village's performance going back to 2009. And I wanted to measure what the rate of inflation was starting at that point coming forward to today. And we can use that as sort of an indicator as to whether or not our spending patterns were fairly close to the rate of inflation during that same timeframe. So this particular chart shows what inflation looked like. 2009, it did drop down below zero and then climbed to 3.2. This year, it's down below zero again. On average, however, the rate of inflation is about 1.65% during that timeframe. So we can use that as sort of a backdrop because we talk about expenses. We wanted to focus on, move to the next page, Tanner. First, very big picture. This particular graph shows the rate of spending every year for the village for all things with the exclusion of utilities. It does say excluding pool, but I believe I have leisure time activities in the 2012 number, which is why we have that, that particular peak. If we were to exclude leisure time activities, that being the pool, you see that average percentage change was 3.47%. It would be slightly less than that particular number. All in all, your overall expenditures have been fairly steady during, between 2009 and 2014. The thing that I want to make sure that we keep in the back of our mind is that during this very same timeframe, the revenues coming into the village from all sources only grew on average 1.59%, okay? And when we get to the very end, I'll talk to you about the challenges of surviving with a, with limited growth in your revenues. It's going to really paint the backdrop to what the village has to deal with going forward. But spending has been relatively controlled during this particular timeframe. And let's kind of dig into some more detail. I've outlined on this chart how your budgets are lined up and where the majority of the money is spent for the village. The top item is the police support in the community. About 34% of all spending goes to the police partner. Lansing Building, 17%. I'm not going to be the expert in detailing what items are included in here, but I think Council, for the most part, is fairly familiar with these things. Basic utility service, street construction, maintenance and repair. When taking, you know, you've got four items that altogether are almost 75% of your spending for the village. This is not uncommon, by the way. This is, this is pretty much the norm for how governments, especially municipal governments, spend money. What's important about this is that we've worked with a number of clients that spend a great deal of time when it's time to do budgets, focusing on items down here in this area. And you can add all these things together up and still not touch a few of these things. Not to say it isn't important to spend time thinking about parks and recreation and spending for parks and recreation, or the municipal park and playground, but in the overall context of things, spending, the spending that drives your financial condition is largely contained in these categories up here. So when you go forward and you think about allocating funds in order to meet certain goals, you can create a great deal more efficiency by focusing in that particular realm of spending as you move forward. But I thought it would be helpful for you and the community to have some perspective on how the spending is aggregated together. With that, I know there was some discussion, quite a bit of discussion early on about this year's budget, about how much money is being spent for various things. So I thought we would put together an analysis that would kind of put things in context about spending for various things. This particular table, there's a lot of numbers on here. We're going to go through some of them so that you have a sort of a handle or a concept of what we're trying to measure. The first thing we have to make some assumptions on is that this is the, I sampled calendar year 2009, which is the column over here, and used actual data every year through calendar year 2015 budget, what was budgeted. And we're starting with the assumption that 2009 was a normal year. So we're saying, okay, we're going to compare our performance every year from that point, assuming 2009 was a normal year for spending. And these are all expenditures, okay? So the first line shows the spending that basically general fund support for police protection. And the second line shows revenues as they have come in from property taxes. I believe that's the order, right, that we have those? So if we assume that 2009, 777,000 would have been a good base year to work with, and that's what I'm assuming since we were using this as the window. What I did is I tracked the spending that's occurred every year since then. So you had an 8% decline in 10. It went up again 9% in 11, 6.4% in 12. Then it dropped 17%, almost 17.5% in 13, went back up 5.5% in 14. And then this year, the budget shows about a 15.7% increase for planned spending for police protection. So when you look at this, just sort of the naked eye, it's really kind of hard to get a handle on just what's going on, because it's up and down, it's up and down, it's up and down, and then it's up big right here. Okay? And so if someone's looking at this and they just kind of look at the last two years, they're seeing 5.5%, 15.7%, so you've got well in excess of 20% increase in spending for police. And to the naked eye would appear to be a pretty significant number. So what we try to do is to put things in context to understand, okay, what exactly are we looking at and what is it really, at the end of the day, tell us? So you see these percentages over here. This 8.29% is actually the percentage difference between 2009 spending and budgeted 2015 spending. So you have these various percentage changes, but in total, the difference between '09 spending and 15 budgeted is a total of 8.29%. Is that high? Is that low? That's really not for me to say, but for what your anticipation or expectations would be. Another way to look at this is what's just, what's the average change year over year? The average increase in spending for police over this same timeframe, assuming we spend what we have budgeted for 15, is 1.9%. And again, if we assume that 2009 is a good base year, then this will give you some frame of reference of what the average has been. I'd always like to look at things sometimes a little bit differently, and I say to myself, because we work with a number of municipal governments, we see the cost changes for police, for fire, for other things. And I would say that we've seen some changes around the state for police and fire where 3% during the same timeframe is not unheard of. And the question is, what if we started with the same base year and were like some other communities and went forward with a 3% year-over-year change? Where would we be this year versus where we are currently? The answer is you'd be about a budget of $928,000. Keeping in mind that 3% is not an unreasonable number for a lot of municipal governments. But let's just assume you're a little more conservative than most, and you use a 2% a year increase. Your budget this year would be $875,000 versus the 837. Still, a pretty good indication. The last one that I put together was simply what number, if I used a number, would put me close to where I'm budgeted? And the answer is 1 and 1/4% year-over-year since 2009 would produce a budget where you are today. And I can only give you my opinion and my perspective. If someone said, David, would it be reasonable to have an increase of 1 and 1/4% sort of normalized over that timeframe from 2009 to 2015? The answer is probably so. That number does not strike me as being extraordinary.
Why is the 1.25 different than the 1.9? Wouldn't those numbers be the same?
It's the effect of compounding.
Okay.
So it wouldn't, yeah, that's a, that's a good question. So if you're, it's 1.25 that gets built on top of a higher number, it's the effect of compounding that creates, so the lower rate gives you a higher return over, so it's a year, it's an annual compounding factor. So nutshell, police spending since 2009 has, in our opinion, been, has been reasonably lined up. Again, assuming a couple things. The first, that '09 is a good number, a good base year, because if '09 happened to be 50% higher than '08, and then we're starting with a much higher number and you're building on that. But if we assume '09 to be okay, that's fine. The other assumption is that the community is satisfied with the police protection that they received. If the community is not satisfied and they're still getting increases, then that's, that's another, that's another issue in and of itself. So I'm going to go through the rest of your major funds using this same methodology, and I wanted to sort of establish that particular one first. Move to the second page. One other way that we look at things too is kind of going back to this issue of comparing your community to other communities. And I always want to say this before I do it, I like comparing, and then again, I don't like comparing. Because when you compare yourself to other communities, you're making the assumption that the other communities are doing something the right way. And let's assume we compare ourselves to a group of people that aren't doing it the right way, and we will just like them. So we have a sense of comfort in looking just like someone who's doing something the wrong way. So I like to look at multiple choices before you actually make that decision. But in looking at this, we looked at eight communities that we could get the data from and verify that data, and looked at their, their spending for their police budget, at the number of officers and part-time officers, and we came up with what would be a per-employee cost for the police department. And you can see that Plain City is the third lowest on this particular list. This doesn't measure quality of work, it doesn't measure how many hours officers may or may not put in or the types of jobs they put in. But again, and again, all this work that we do is completely independent. I just want to get a feel for where you are. This gives you an idea of where you stand relative to these other communities. And of course, you remember St. Bernard and the circumstances. That's St. Bernard, yes. But the community that I still feel that you guys are most like is White House. And, you know, White House has a different level, different levels of spending out there. Let's move on to the next page and talk about some of the other categories. In looking at some of the large categories, and I, as a point of just clarification, I recognize that 2015, you won't change some of the accounting features. So I'm only focusing on what we know as it was between '09 and 14. And then when we come back next year, we'll adjust the change in accounting to represent where things are. Total land and buildings, the same approach. Where were we in 2009? We were at $348,000 in spending for land and buildings. And, you know, we had some ups and downs and ups and downs along the way, and, you know, some pretty big ups here. But overall, the average change is 1.86. The normalized rate was 0.65. Both pretty close to inflation. Total basic utility services, and one thing I want to make clear on that, utility is not, in this particular case, not water and sewer, right? And it's also not gas and electric. This is waste collection.
And electricity.
Okay. So things like that. Those titles ultimately might be a little more descriptive for those of us looking at it from the outside, to kind of get a handle on it. The 253 all the way to 279, this one's a little more consistent year-over-year, about a 2% change in spending each year going forward. Street construction, maintenance and repair, okay? 107,000 in '09 up to 1.92. This number starts to get pretty big. 16% average, 12%... Sixteen percent average, twelve percent normalized, and you see, so you see a twenty percent increase, twelve percent decrease, six and a half percent decrease, seventy-five percent increase in '14. I don't know what drove most of the increase in '14, but I would have to suspect that this is basically road conditions that are requiring more cash investment in those things. The spending pattern is indicative of communities that have an aging infrastructure. So what you end up with are these patterns where you fix problems for a while and then it's okay for a year and you have to come back and spend more the next time, and then it's okay for a year and you have to come back and spend even more the next time. Remember the analogy I gave of the hole that you fill up and then all the gravel comes out and the next time you put the gravel in, the hole gets a little bigger, and it gets a little bigger. If you carry this pattern out into the future, you're going to continually get greater and greater humps in the spending category for street construction, maintenance or repair. So from our perspective, you know, this type of spending pattern is consistent with a community that has an aging infrastructure, and it will likely continue and grow with time. So we sort of think that's going to be an issue. So we'll move to the next, the next table. Boards and commissions. We're at 113,000 in '09, and that particular line was reduced by almost forty-six percent down to sixty-one thousand.
I think you skipped the page.
I did?
Swimming pools.
Oh, swimming pool.
It's out of order. Page 11 is boards and commissions.
Okay. So page 10, swimming pool. This particular one, again, this was, this is varied because you see the spending in '12 for the, for the new facility that was, that was brought in. And then the budget, you know, the actual in '13 and '14, that number is continuing to decline. So, you know, I tend to want to leave that one sort of separate from everything else because it has a sort of own distinct being. But I will ask, the money that's being spent, the 93 and the 90,000, those are all general fund-supported expenditures at this particular point. And I see that, you know, we have a decline in that spending going forward. It is an area, though, that could become more of an expense as you go forward in maintaining this swimming pool. I know there's some discussion about some capital improvements there as well. So the data on this particular one is a bit skewed because of the investment that was made in '12 to move us there. Our other governmental services, our general governmental services, we started at 161,000. Spending in that category has moved around quite a bit. I do understand that council has worked, used that fund to a certain degree as a contingency fund to manage unexpected expenses and capital needs during the course of, the course of the year, which is not a bad idea, especially given the infrastructure needs of the community. And we see that the trend there has been to gradually ratchet down that amount if you can. I know that, I said, for 2015, that particular fund was being rolled into other funds, is basically the approach there. Total clerk treasurer, 62,000 in 2009, 67,000 in 2014. Overall, nine percent change in that timeframe. The normalized rate, one point six six percent are basically the rate of inflation. Yes, sir?
David, on the, some info, you made a comment that the 90,000 was general fund expenditure, and actually, that's based upon pool revenue.
Okay.
So the revenue that we're collecting is paying for the pool, are paying for the operations of the pool.
Okay.
No money's really coming out of general fund, I believe. So we've been very fortunate since the pool opened.
Okay, very good. Yeah, the, in the particular, are you all budgeting that amount of money to what's expected from the revenue?
Correct, yes.
Okay, very good. And that's again, that's why I'm kind of hesitant to even have that particular item up there. But I do want it up there because, you know, ultimately, there will be capital needs that will come up, but I'm not as concerned. You know, back to that page that showed the percentage of overall spending, the pool was a small, small piece of that. Moving to page 11. Now we'll talk about boards and commissions. Boards and commission, again, we saw some pretty substantial reductions in spending over this timeframe, normalized down to almost twelve percent reduction in spending. Legislative activities, and I understand that's basically council expenses, two percent normalized year-over-year. Just nothing there that stands out as a major concern. Income tax administration, that is a slightly higher change, and that's the cost, I believe, for the Rita tax services for the most part. A slightly higher increase overall, but a small part of the budget for, for the community. And then you look at the overall cost of that, in order to actually do income tax administration in-house, would likely cost you twice as much as that, as that number. So even though it's growing at a slightly higher rate, the overall benefit of using it is still pretty, pretty substantial from an operating perspective. Let's move to the next page and look at our parks and rent. We see some increases in park and rent from 18,000 to 35,000. Ninety percent change over that timeframe, thirteen point nine four percent normalized. The key, again, there is, you know, we're talking about $35,000 out of a pretty substantial amount of spending. It's a very, very small percentage of the overall activity of the, of the village. So this change in spending here is not, from our perspective, something that would really be a concern, especially if the priority is to put some focus in the quality of life aspect that parks and rent happen to bring to the community. Total mayor administrative services, 21, almost 22,000 in '09. Spending declined down to 17,000 to 40, almost a five percent reduction in spending in this very, very timeframe. Assuming that's the mayor and the mayor's support services in her office. So, you know, what else can be said about that? Very responsible spending. Now, I want to turn for a second and talk about utilities, but in sort of a big way. Utilities are a key aspect of this particular community. There's water and there's wastewater. And it's made up of, in the past, two basic line items, operations and capital. The operating expenses at 420 for water up to 429 is a very small increase for operating purposes. But when you look at the capital spending, it's been all over the place. Forty-three thousand, eighty-four thousand, six thousand, two seventy-five, down to seventy-two, up to two sixty. And it's created some pretty significant swings in the spendings up and down. Again, what this tells someone that's been in the business like we have for a while is that you're dealing with a system that had, that's aged and at any given moment requires an investment of cash. And given the amounts that have changed from time to time for capital, it's kind of hard to know exactly how much that cash is going to be because it seems to be sort of inconsistent. Our perspective when we look at that is that this particular trend is going to continue. And we've spent some time meeting with the utility supervisor and understanding the age of the facility, the type of equipment that's in the facility, and we'll come back with our recommendations, but I will say that I do not think this is a trend that will go away. And the pattern repeats itself whether it's water, wastewater or streets. The spend gets bigger and bigger and bigger every so many years, then ultimately, those years come together. So, you know, but you might be five years apart and three percent increase every time and all of a sudden it's four years apart, five percent increase, three years apart, seven percent increase. And that's what happens when you make changes over time. On the sewer side, a slightly different story. Overall, the decline, there was a decline in spending, but it's largely because of some pretty significant capital investments in '09, '10 and '11, and then those capital amounts dropped in '12, '13 and '14, which created the declines there. We think that both systems have some, some challenges ahead. We, when we get to our recommendations, we'll talk about some things that we think that the village could do to actually improve the efficiency of those facilities and save some money as well. But this is what I think is most important for the community to know. And everything is, everything is relative, and we understand that people think things are expensive based on their experience, and sometimes that feels real. But I think the community should know that based on the Ohio EPA's water rate survey from 2013, the village is at 541 for wastewater, 437 for water, and the state average is 606 for wastewater and 563 for water. This is not inconsistent with everything else that we found from your financial operations, You've done a very good job of keeping the community affordable compared to other communities in the state of Ohio. And this is another, another example of that. So Tanner, if you'll move to page 14. So we've put together a few charts to give you an idea on your comparable spending as it compares to some of the other communities out there. General government, now then, we show your numbers for '11, '12 and '13 and how you compare with some of the other communities. The challenge is with general government is that some communities include items in general government or don't include items in general government, you might. So it's a difficult apples-to-apples comparison, and I wouldn't necessarily weigh heavily on that. Security of persons and property, in every case, is almost exclusively police protection. Here's yet another snapshot of where we were in '11, '12 and '13. Sort of, you know, Bluffton was a bit down where we are. So Bluffton, Georgetown and Plain City, pretty close in their spending for security of persons and property. Orange Bowl, West Jeff and the White House, obviously, a little bit higher in their respective years. Leisure time activity, guess where the pool is? But outside of that, you can see a bit of a, of a sort of a common feature that there isn't a great deal invested in leisure time activity by some of the comparable communities they do have. And outside of the pool, you know, you would be pretty much in line with the group as a whole. So Tanner, let's go to page 15. Page 15. And it's interesting what numbers tell you if you spend enough time thinking about it. Capital outlay, that's the investment that communities make in their infrastructure and their equipment, you know, their patrol cars and their water lines and sewer lines. And we get asked on a regular basis, you know, should we be spending more? You know, how do we figure out how much we need to spend or invest in our infrastructure capital? And one way that you can do, do it is to look at, well, what are other people spending of our size with similar infrastructure? Here we are in '11, '12 and '13. And when you look at it just within your own spending, you go, wow, we're spending a lot on capital. You know, you get that feeling, wow, I feel like I'm, I spent $200,000 at the water plant and $300,000 at the sewer plant, I'm spending a lot. But when you look at it relative to other places, you know, it doesn't appear that you are. It appears that you've been very conservative in your investment in, in capital. And that in and of itself could, you know, paint a picture of what might be down the road for us. You heard the phrase, or heard the phrase, deferred maintenance. Deferred maintenance is sort of the buildup of, of things that haven't been dealt with today. The fact that you haven't spent money and capital over the last five years isn't necessarily a bad thing because we've maintained a very solid financial position during that, that five-year timeframe, when a lot of communities really struggle to stay, to stay meaningful to their community. It does tell us, though, that looking forward, we might need to develop some better plans and, and be prepared for what's yet to come for this community overall. Transportation, that would be roads. Maintenance and care, similar to this. You can see where we are in the, the spending, the spending history in that particular category. And so I won't beat a dead horse on that particular. So let's move on to 60. This particular table I provided for you because I just think that it's important for you to have some perspective about overall salaries and compensation for key officers that work in the, the village. This particular data I collected from the Buckeye Institute on Public Policy, from salary.com and from the International City Managers Association, to give us some indication of where salaries are. Now, this indication is only for people that are doing just the one job. In my interviews with your staff, I have learned that your staff are multi-talented individuals that wear multiple hats, which is one of the reasons that you've been able to maintain the spending levels that you have. So I want to be careful to say that it may not be completely fair to just simply say that the village administrator is just the village administrator. I think there are duties beyond that that get shown here. The same with, I show audit manager and the financial officer because your treasurer has both responsibilities, both as the audit officer and the finance officer for the village. We have police chief numbers, and these are all for central Ohio jobs. Police officer, treatment plant manager, and this is for a single, a single plant, not two. So just to give you some perspective. But I wanted you to have some idea of what the salary range looks like out there. What's more important is to understand that in a competitive environment, you know, having good employees is important because they make, and we talked about the relationship of the community with the village, and that happens through a connection of your people to the community. We live in a competitive environment, in a competitive world, so there are other communities like you down the street that have people like your people that in some cases would like to have your people. And they're willing to compete with you to get them. Likewise, you would want to compete with them to get quality people. So this can give you some frame of reference for compensation and knowing where we are. I will say that based on what we know about the salaries that are paid, we didn't find any circumstances of anyone on staff here that's receiving pay that's out of line with the market. So, I mean, that's one of the things I think I was asked to look into. And there's, you know, if I had to say, in all honesty, they are probably on the lower end of the, of the scale, based on the requirements of the job that they've, that they've demonstrated to me. So let's move to the, to the conclusion of the detailed analysis that we've put up there.
David, if I could go back to that last page, just to clarify, on the salaries, are all those inclusive of the overtime pension help, basically, indication? Are they supposed to be? Because it's...
The all column?
Yes. Okay, well, there's a, just one arrow.
Okay, yeah, my apologies. Yeah, those are all, that should include, the all column should include that.
Yeah, the administrator is supposed to salary.
I see, okay. All right. So then, what, on the conclusions page, from our work from beginning to today, the first thing is that someone, you know, I always look at this as if I'm being questioned by an attorney at court. The question is, David, do you think that the way Plain City has spent money since 2009 is unacceptable or acceptable from your, your perspective as a finance expert? And I would say that your spending has been acceptable, and it's been well managed during a time where revenues were very tight. And I say that in light of the, the need for you to spend what you spent on capital because that, when something breaks, you can't ignore it, you have to, you have to deal with it. So the administration, council and the administration have done, you know, have done a good job. There's nothing there to really be concerned about. The police budget, as it is today, from our perspective, is, the growth in the budget has been modest, it's within inflation. We know that, you know, the police department has been up and down in staffing during that timeframe, but all in all, it's, it is not, does not appear to be out of line from our perspective. Your salaries for all your top administrators are appropriate based on market data. In fact, we think it might be, they might be slightly below average. Your capital and infrastructure spending is inconsistent, and that will, that's a sort of a nature of just being, reacting to circumstances. We're going to recommend, when you hear from us again, that we take a more proactive approach because the challenge with reacting is that you, you don't know if you're going to have enough money to react to it, and it's better to give that, better handle on that. Your water and sewer rates below state averages. Your infrastructure improvements still will need to be, need to be addressed. We think that you probably have ample room within your rate structure. We think that you probably have ample room within your rate structure to, to get to those. All in all, our analysis has concluded that the village has done a very fine job from a financial performance since 2009, and has done so with some obstacles through the process. But we, we can't say that we found anything that concerns us about your financial operations. And we think the community should be aware that you've done a very good job with their tax policy. So that's the conclusion of our in-depth analysis. Next week, or the next time we get together, we have about 10 recommendations that we would like to make, make to council about the things that we've learned to, to allow you to think more long-term about financial circumstances. And then hopefully, we can, we can come back each year and kind of track with you how those things are, are coming together. Are there any questions? I know it took us a while to get, to get here, but...
Just one observation, in the area of water and sewer capital, I would urge you to maybe visit with Kevin and Renee to get a little bit more information on some of the peaks and valleys that you sense there. Some of it has been accrued funds until we could, could take on a project, and that project happens to be big projects.
I see.
Like painting a water tower, or both of them at the same time. So that might be helpful for you to understand before formulating your recommendations. Also, on the sewer capital, there's times that sewer capital has, sometimes has to be funded out of general fund because we've had lack of building in the community, so we're not collecting tap fees. So that would help, you need to talk to Renee and Kevin, get a little bit more insight there.
Any other questions? All right, well, thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.